My name is Dan Carney. It's my privilege to be able to serve as chairman of this board for the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College at this meeting being held on Thursday, April the 11th, 2024, at 12:30 PM, community room of the Emerging Technologies Workforce Building at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider an act upon the posted agenda if you call this meeting in order. Mr. Baker, would you perform an invocation for us?
Be happy to. Thank you, sir. Please bow with me. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. Before we go any further, we want to pray for the McKinley family this morning, this afternoon. Please give them strength, the peace that surpasses all understanding as they go through a terrible time, and wrap your arms around them. Help us to be a part of that process. Lord, I thank you for this board, all the time they spend at our college. I pray that you redeem that time with their families, be with them as they deliberate. Thank you for the semester, and allow our students to finish the semester strong. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Worley, did you have anyone signed up to address us today? Thank you very much. Item number three on the agenda is the president's report, President Todd Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognitions. Weatherford College recently hosted President Sylvia Trent Adams of the University of North Texas Health Science Center for a transfer agreement signing ceremony. Bachelor degree graduates from our WC allied health programs will now be able to seamlessly transfer to UNT Health Science Center Fort Worth for their master's degree programs. Congratulations to men's head basketball coach Chris Lewis. His squad finished nine and five in the conference, second place, and qualified for the NJCAA Region Five Tournament for the second consecutive year. The team's two-year win total is the highest it has been in 25 years, and we just had, for the first time in 16 years, an All-American from the men's basketball squad. He has led the program to a great turnaround, and we expect an even brighter future. Four Weatherford College students recently attended the National Association of Teachers of Singing competition in Stephenville, and each received a first-place ranking in their division. Our WC fine and performing arts programs continue to excel. The Northern Texas Junior College Athletic Conference has announced the Academic All-Conference Athletes for the 2023-2024 academic year. Twenty-seven Coyote athletes were named Academic All-Conference. Each honoree earned at least 36 hours of courses leading to a degree while maintaining a cumulative grade point average of 3.25 or higher. The same discipline that leads to success on the competition surfaces leads to success in the classroom and in life. Employee notices. DMAC requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Melissa Johnson, a student services clerk, has resigned effective 3/28/24, and Mickey Ryan, the director of our radiology program, has resigned effective 7/31/24. We thank Melissa and Mickey for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. Chair, that concludes the president's report.
Thank you very much, President Farmer. Item number four on the agenda is the consent agenda and financial reports, which has been posted, items A, B, and C, approval of minutes from the last meeting and the recall meeting, the financial reports ending March 31st, and a contract proposal from Spectrum Enterprise. Is there anyone on the board that has a comment, a question about any of those items before I call for a motion in a second? Do I have a motion?
I got it.
Okay, in a second.
Second.
All in favor? It is approved unanimously. Item number five is reports from President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As always, you've been provided a written update in your board packet on the great things happening at WCWC, as well as our academic and student services update. And then today, we have, very proud to present the Weatherford College Foundation Annual Report. Our Weatherford College Foundation, under the leadership of Mr. Brent Baker, continues to do a phenomenal job for our students, and I'll let him introduce. We also have Terry from our financial aid office, and we're very proud of their hard work as well. So Brent, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Farmer, and thank you for your support of the foundation. And I want to thank the board for your support of the foundation and our students. I promise to be brief today. I have two takeaways for you. If you don't remember anything that we talk about the next few minutes, there are two things. Number one, your college has some very generous and consistent donors, and they should be thanked and appreciated for that. And the second thing is, is your college and your foundation are helping more students than ever before, and I think we'll show that through this presentation. Update on our college foundation. We had a board meeting in January, Board of Directors of our college foundation, led by Mr. Brent Goff, who's done a wonderful job since Bob Glenn passed away back in 2022. And our audit showed several numbers I'm going to give you here, the first being our bread and butter, scholarships. Our foundation, in the academic year 2223, which was the year that was audited that day, gave more than $564,000 in scholarships to Weatherford College students. That's not only a record, that shattered the previous record. I'll show you the last 10 years.
That's just incredible, Brent.
Thank you.
It's just incredible.
It was, yes. Give yourself a hand, yes. Thank you very much. It was a banner year. Our previous record was 387,000 the year before, so you can see that that was an incredible year. The last 10 years, our foundation has given more than $3 million in scholarships to Weatherford College students, so very, very pleased with that. And President Farmer alluded to our financial aid department, and this is some data that we had recently from IPETS. IPETS is the Integrated Post-Secondary Education Data System Report. What they do is they take a comparison group of similar-sized colleges from across the country and similar demographics and compare us to those other colleges in a variety of areas. And one of those areas was student aid. And that comparison group of those colleges, the average student aid for those colleges was 77%. In other words, 77% of the student bodies at those colleges receive some sort of aid, whether it's federal financial aid, scholarships, states, state aid, et cetera. Weatherford College, during the same period, 85% of our student body receives some sort of aid. That's incredible to be that far above the average. And Terry Thompson is here. She is our Director of Financial Aid. She does an incredible job, she and her staff, making sure our students get help. Would you give her a hand, please? We're very proud of that. Back to the foundation. The total net assets of the foundation have also grown. As of 8/31, which was the cutoff date for our audit, our foundation had a net assets of $11.3 million. That number is closer to $12 million now, but that is a 48% increase in the last 10 years for our foundation. So President Farmer likes to say, and it's true, that we've been able to give more scholarships and also increase our net assets at the same time, which is pretty unusual for a college foundation to be able to do both at the same time. I'd like to talk about our donors. You all received an annual report recently, and in there is a list of all of our donors from the calendar year 2023. And you see many, many names on that list. It actually represents 255 different gifts. And you notice the, you know, there are 17 names under the benefactors list, $10,000 and above. We have some very generous, large donors. But really, if you look at all those names, it takes all of those donors of all kinds of gift sizes to make this work, not just the large donors. As a matter of fact, let me back up. 255 gifts in the 2023 year. The average gift during that year was $1,844. So you can see that really, it takes everyone to make this work. Other foundation activities, we have our Student Emergency Fund, where we're able to help students who run into a serious emergency, you know, a car issue, they're about to be evicted, other issues that come up. Usually within 24 to 48 hours, we are able to help that student and get them back on their feet so they can finish their studies. Faculty staff recognition, we handle that for the college, whether it's retirement gifts or the annual service awards, five, 10, 15 years, et cetera. And then special projects, like the Steinway Program we had recently, the Turf Project, what are the needs are, the college foundation is always there to help. Some events that I'd like to ask you to put down on your calendars now, we have our Taste of Parker County event, that's a fundraiser for the foundation next Thursday night. That's at Heritage Park. Let me know if you need tickets for that. We have our Weatherford College Golf Tournament, October 3rd, of course, that's at Canyon West. Our Scholarship Donor Appreciation Dinner. And for me personally, if there's any event of the entire year that I would encourage you to attend, it's that one. Love to see y'all there. That will also be at Canyon West this year, November the 7th. And then the Coyote Chase Race on November the 6th. And finally, this room has a lot of donors in it. Many of people in this room have, including board members, have been donors to the Weatherford College Foundation, and I want to say thank you very much. And if I may be so bold, each of you have an envelope or a folder like this at your place, board members, and if you'd like to become a donor, or if you've already been a donor and you'd like to continue that, we would love to help you out with that. See me if you'd like more information. And I have extras here, y'all, if anybody wants to. So thank you very much for your generosity. We appreciate it. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
How's that? Those are, everybody's being congratulated, working on this is wonderful. I would like to know how many students that represents. In that 564,000, how many students is that? How many of them are Wise County's campus students as well?
I can get you that information. I don't know the information offhand.
Oh, okay.
But I can get that information. I will tell you that our average scholarship size, our typical scholarship size, I should say, is $1,000 per long semester. So we like to award students with $2,000 at the beginning of the academic year, $1,000 each semester. We do have some scholarships that are larger than that. We now have some housing scholarships that are larger than that as well. And we do have at least two endowments that are earmarked for Wise County students, the largest being the Roy and Janine Eaton Scholarship. I know you know the Eaton as well, but I can get you those specific details, sir.
Please, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Baker, it's just always a pleasure to hear your presentation because it's always uplifting. It's always, nearly always, good news, and we appreciate that. It's good to hear all the positive things that are going on up here, and you're kind of the face of that, and we appreciate that.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that.
The next item that I see is item number six, future agenda items or meetings by Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Cantrell and her team are always diligent in preparing our annual budgets. This year is an even more challenging year with all of the legal changes associated with dual credit, and next month, she will be bringing you in written form the preliminary 2024-2025 budget report.
Thank you, sir. Item number seven, back to Mr. Baker for some announcements.
Yes, sir. Let me turn to that page. Okay, upcoming events. We have several fine arts events coming up, including a theater event this weekend, actually starts tonight, Bad Auditions by Bad Actors. Obviously, that's a comedy that starts tonight, runs through Saturday. Several baseball games. We actually have a special event Saturday. It is Mental Health Awareness Day at Roger Williams Ballpark. The baseball team is partnering with a foundation that focuses on mental health and suicide awareness that is coming up this Saturday as well. Complication Ceremony next week on April 17th, honoring our best and brightest students here at WC. I mentioned Taste of Parker County already. The Weatherford College International Piano Competition is next Saturday. That'll run from 9:30 till 3:30, and anytime during that day, if you drop in, you will see some incredible musicians from all over the country and all over the world, actually.
Do you know how many, how many entrants?
How many entrants? There were over 100, I think 117 entrants, but there are...
122.
How many?
122.
122, but I believe there are 10 finalists that will compete that day in person.
Are there any international students?
Absolutely. Many of them are international, absolutely.
22 countries represented.
There you go. Our Jazz Orchestra has a concert not only next Thursday night, but also a student recital on April 22nd. And then you have our, although this is at Canyon West, we are hosting a golf tournament, the Southwest District Women's Golf Championship. First time we've been able to host an NJCAA qualifying event. This will qualify women's golf teams for the national tournament. That'll be at Canyon West, April 29th to May 1st, and then we have an opera workshop event on May the 3rd.
Hey, Brent.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you give a little rundown on that concert that was here last week?
It's all about the music. It was pretty special, wasn't it? We had, Duane Dorrit puts this together, and it was really special this year because one of our alumni, Keith Loftus, who was a distinguished alumnus award winner here, he has now gone on to New York, and he is a professional saxophone player in New York City. And he performed with some incredible musicians that night. We had a student perform. We had the great Clyde George on organ, if you ever have a chance to see him play, just tremendous, and I really enjoyed it.
Well, I did too. I thought it was just wonderful, and that young lady was just remarkable.
She is incredible. Her name is Reagan Davis, one of our students. If you ever have a chance to see her perform, she's something special.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's all I have.
Thank you again, Brent. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Item number eight on our posted agenda is a closed session to deal with real property matters and with employee matters, so we will jump briefly for...
A closed session.
Okay, the time now is 1:45 according to my timepiece, 1:45 p.m. April 11, 2024. We're back in session now following our closed session. Considerations. Item number nine is consideration of possible action of real property. We don't have any action items under that numbered item today. Item number 10, consideration possible action, appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee. We do not have any action items under that item today. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I saw him in second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We are adjourned.